Have everybody's attention, please. I guess I go ahead, Colleen. So I'm not able. Thank you, Colleen.
No problem.
So I'd like to call every attention and call this meeting to order. I'd like to have everybody stand first and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll motion to accept the agenda.
Okay. So we're moving into public comments. I'd like to ask a few things to the public. One, to please sign in if you haven't when you come up and print it so that we can read it. And then if you're going to stand up to speak, if you'll say your name out loud so we understand who's speaking from the audience. I like to put a face with names just so it creates good relationships. So I'd like to have that done if that's a reasonable request. As far as the comments go, I would prefer, we're all adults, that we're all respectable, kind. It's a concerning issue, but that we can still be kind and gentle and talk with each other with respect. I will give everybody at least three minutes since there's a big group depending on how many speak. So please be succinct and, you know, state your concerns. I'd like to also know your solutions and what you feel the library could do to solve this matter. I will inform everybody that the board will not participate in discussion today because we have a new director. I'd like to welcome James Paisley since I'm doing this. So since we have a new director, I thought it only appropriate to wait till the new director's on board on Tuesday of next week. So we will take all of this into consideration. We are here to support the community and what the community wants. And so what this is going to allow us to do is to relook at this. The director and the board will get together to discuss all of this. And believe me, I'll keep you informed. I'm a very transparent kind of girl, so I'll let you all know. And if we need to have a follow-up meeting, that'll be to be announced as well. And I appreciate all of you making the attempt to come out this morning as well. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns? And I'm going to just put my minutes on my phone if that's okay with everybody. Okay? So at this point then, whoever would like to be first can come up and speak. Oh, you want to be first or you have a comment?
No, can we begin by stating what the issue at hand is?
Sure. My would come up to, and I guess we put it as reconciliation of our materials in the library, basically about the books that you guys have found within the library shelves that are inappropriate for children of a young age with sexual content, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think I need to go in there. I think everybody kind of has a good understanding of that. Does that suffice for you?
I'd like more specifics as far as what's actually been found and what we're talking about.
We're not, that's to be decided. All I know is from the last meeting, we had a resident that spoke up and there was like 20 books that he found off of the library shelves with different content. I reviewed those books myself and so have made those books to be off the shelf for right now until we hear from the community, we hear what your concerns are, what your solutions are, to get an idea of what everybody's thinking.
And then we'll... Is there a list of those books? Is there a list of those 20 books?
I don't, I mean, there might be a list, but right now they're off the shelf and so they're not going to be put out until this matter has kind of come to a conclusion. That's all I can tell you at this point.
I'd like to speak first.
Yeah. Do you have a question? Because I'm going to stop talking and allow you to speak.
Are you going to make those books available for us to review to get, so we can form our opinions on the individual book?
If you choose to do that, you're more than welcome to come in and look at that book and see that book. So that would be up to you guys to come in on your own time to do that. Today, we're not going to, you know, review those books at this time. We looked at a few of them. I've looked at them. So right now, the appointment, the important part is to listen to the community and what you all have to say.
You said the books are off the shelves, but I actually checked out three of those books this morning.
The ones that I mentioned from the last meeting are off the shelf. There are still meeting, there are still probably books in the library. That's why this meeting was called, to get the public input, and we'll go from there. Are we good with all the questions so we can proceed? Okay. So whoever would like to be first can come up.
There's a list up there.
Sydney Coffey.
Can I come up front?
Yeah. Do you want to go and order the list? I don't care as long as she just... Sydney, that's fine. You come, you come in.
Hi, I'm Sydney. I saw in the last board meeting... Vicky, would you prefer if I stand up there?
That's a, that's a great idea.
Hi, good morning. I saw in the last board meeting, there were many members of the community who had issues with books regarding the LGBT community. I'm speaking today to address these concerns and provide three reasons why these books should not be removed from the Camden County Library District. Those reasons are the rights and authority of parents, lowering suicide among LGBT youth, and the First Amendment. The first point I mentioned was the authority of parents. I know one of our neighbors in the previous meeting read "It Feels Good to Be Yourself" by Teresa Thorne. This book is in our E-room, a room designed to have picture books and board books for individuals, primarily children, who do not yet have the skills to read. Therefore, these children are developmentally incapable of reading this book without a parent or guardian choosing to read it to them. Children under five years old cannot have library cards. Therefore, it must be the parents checking the books out, too. I trust parents to make the decision whether or not to read this to their child. It is not the library's right nor job to do so. The second point I would like to address is the self-harm and suicide rates among LGBT youth. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in 10- to 14-year-olds and third-leading cause of death in 15- to 24-year-olds. According to the Trevor Project, an organization designed to decrease suicide rates with educated and experienced staff, LGBT youth are four times as likely to attempt suicide than their non-LGBTQ peers. One of these attempts by an LGBT youth are made every 45 seconds. Suicide risks include social rejection and lack of affirming spaces. Fifty-two percent of LGBT youth reported experiencing bullying in the last year because of their sexuality or gender identity. So what does this have to do with the library? Children having access to books about LGBT experiences builds empathy and serves as windowbooks to see other people's experiences. An LGBT book will not make a child gay or transgender. Rather, it will make a child empathetic, an individual less likely to bully their peers. If the library has these books, it will serve as an affirming space that lowers the risk of LGBT children and teenagers committing suicide. Finally, I will discuss the constitutional obligation we have to uphold the First Amendment. Many libraries have faced lawsuits as a result of removing LGBT books from the shelves and displays, such as the Sterling Free Public Library in Kansas, and I do not want to see that happen to us. Not only must I mention the freedom of speech, but also the separation of church and state. If individuals are challenging these books because they consider homosexuality and being transgender a sin, I must remind them their religious beliefs constitutionally must not influence the operations of government institutions such as libraries. If any, oh, sorry, I skipped a part. President of law set in Sun versus City of Wichita Falls, Texas, Denver Area Education Telecommunications Consortium, Inc. versus FCC, and Section 8 of the Missouri Constitution Bill of Rights have stated that this removal would be a violation of the First Amendment. If anyone wants further information on those, they are discussed in detail in the Camden County Library District selection policy available on the website. I will conclude with a quote. It was Voltaire who said, "Think for yourselves and let others enjoy the privilege to do so, too." I want the library to help end child and teenage suicide. I want our library to support the First Amendment and be immune to lawsuits. I want to support parents' right to choose what is best for themselves and their children. Thank you for your time.
We're not, we're not discussing.
I'm not discussing. I'm just trying to take notes. Could you remind me your name?
Sydney.
Sydney Coffey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, you're next.
Good morning. Sydney, thank you. If I could please get a show of hands, how many people in this room have a library card? Wonderful. How many board members have a library card in 2022? I served on the library board for 12 years. When I was appointed, Dr. John Beard Brumbeck, their name for him, was superintendent and retired, and he was the president of the school board at that time. I don't think, I'm sorry, I'm loud enough? I don't think I've met a more conservative man. He was in the military. And when we had a meeting, if it lasted more than an hour, our monthly meeting lasted an hour, that was away. I mean, we were done. There was nothing that took more than an hour. You came prepared, you were ready, and that was it. He's been gone eight years, and I think he'd be spinning right now. I just want to say that we're all indoctrinated in some way, shape, or form. It's what makes us citizens, it makes us human beings. And we live in a democracy and a free country. And I am totally against book banning. I'm a taxpaying citizen, and I want materials to remain in the library.
Thank you. Carrie Ketchum? Karen Ketchum?
Hi, I'm Karen Ketchum. When considering the removal of the books in question and the selection process going forward, we must consider this through a lens of equity. Will all children and young adults feel represented in the literature available in our library? This isn't a new problem. Books have been challenged for decades. In 1962, "The Snowy Day" by Ezra Jack Keats was challenged for portraying a black hair, a black main character during a time when primarily all characters were white. Judy Blume published "Where Are You, God?", in Margaret, in 1970. She was a pioneer of young adult literature that tackled sex and sexual feelings. The John Newberry Medal Book, "The Giver," by Lois Duncan, often, is often challenged, and the reason includes how it handles sexuality in pre-teen and young teenagers. The John Newberry Medal is awarded for books up to age 14. The book, "The Giver," reflects our current narratives. The setting was a world where information and the human experience was controlled. Many tween, teen, and young adult books cover topics that are relevant to this age group. Some of those topics are sex. If you question this, brush up on your child development. I can't help but notice that the books that are being challenged are the ones that deal with themes related to gender identity and LGBTQ+ situations. Until recently, heterosexual relationships were the only relationships shown in children's literature. Gay, bisexual, transgender, or questioning kids simply didn't have books that reflected their struggles. To repeat a little of what Ms. Coffey said, the Trevor Project in 2023 did a nationwide study, and 45% of the LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in that previous year. That is nearly 1 in 5 transgender and non-binary youth who attempted suicide. And LGBTQ youth of color represented an even higher rate than their white counterparts. The LGBTQ youth who live in a community that is accepting of LGBTQ people reported significantly lower rates of suicide attempts than those who do not. Like I said, this isn't new. In the 80s and 90s, there was a trend in children's literature to help children understand what it meant to be a child of divorce and blended families. These books are still being challenged today. Children who are growing up in LGBTQ+ homes need resources written in a developmentally appropriate way for them to understand their family dynamics. The books that some have determined are obscene are exactly what these children and families deserve to have access to. There is a common thread in many of the books that are challenged. Their target audience are members of the LGBTQ+ community. If the problem truly is sexual situations in books, then this list of challenged books should be much longer. The problem is not the content, but rather the personal beliefs of those who are challenging the books. It is fine for a parent to choose what their child reads and what they're exposed to, but it is not okay for that parent to decide for everyone.
Karen, just another minute, that's okay.
The library has safeguards in place to keep children from checking out books that are deemed for an older audience. The burden of what children read while in the library falls on the laps of the parents. It is not the responsibility of the board to dictate the individual needs of the community members by limiting access to literature that is important to underserved populations. All citizens of Camden County, regardless of their gender identity and sexual orientation, should be represented in the literature in the library. That's all I have. Thank you.
And we have Daniel Ousley.
I'm not going to say a lot. I said probably more than I should have at the last meeting, but to make, the thing, the first thing I said at the last board meeting is, it's not about banning books, it's about protecting kids. And that's still my stand. I mean, I don't think, I think a parent should be able to bring a child in the library and not be concerned that they pick up a book and it says, "You can be a boy, or you can be a girl, you can be neither, you can be both, or you can change it whenever you want to." I mean, that's really all I'm going to say about the books. Now, now, as far as this, the children's request for reconsideration form, I did have some problems with the form. At the top, it says the form must be completely filled out to be accepted. No partially filled out forms will be accepted, which is fine. And then at the end, it says this form becomes part of the library record, and the form and results of the complaint will be purchased, will be published on the library website to comply with Missouri regulations, which I'm fine with that, too. The thing I have a problem with, I don't have a problem with it being published on the website. I don't have a problem with my name being published. I do have a problem with my address and my phone number being published on the website. That's been much. And also, I had, all the questions I felt were fine except for the last question. It seems like this last question, I don't know if a psychologist created this question or what, but you're challenging a book that you don't approve of. And the question, the question says, "In its place, what book of equal library quality..." Well, obviously, you don't think it's quality if you're challenging the book. "...would you recommend that would convey as valuable a picture?" You obviously don't think it portrays a valuable picture and a perspective of the subject related. I just, I just think that that question is, doesn't really make sense. That's all I got. Thanks.
Okay. Becky Saflow, still want to speak?
I don't have a lot to say, and I think that everybody that I've heard speak so far today has really expressed some of my thoughts, so I'm going to make it short. As a parent, and having seen other problems in other libraries, my only concern is graphic novels are very popular in young children today. It didn't used to be where it was just all writing. Now it's all pictures. I've seen some of these books. They're very graphic, and they express things that I would never want myself to see. Unfortunately, I have. So my only concern is, I am not all about book banning censorship. I think everybody needs to have information available to them. The thing of it is, is safety. And the only thing I'm asking is that we encourage conversations between our children and our parents. And sometimes, the parent has to be the advocate for, if they are truly forward in supporting their child and they agree with this, then they have to be an advocate. We don't have to come in here and rent a book out. We can get it online. It's not that it's being banned. My concern is, what has happened in other libraries, and I've seen it, they have them on display. You walk into a library and here's all these books, and little kids, I mean, three-year-olds, they don't know, they don't know how to read, but they can certainly see the pictures. That's what I'm concerned about. It's the things that they're being exposed to that way. The other question that no one has brought up, and I guess it's a good topic, is my tax dollars. I don't support those types of books. I don't think that they should be banned, but I really prefer that my tax dollars do not go towards purchasing those types of books. I don't have the answer to that. I know, as I'm sitting here and I'm looking at the crowd and I'm hearing what everyone's saying, there's probably any number of groups and people that are willing to voluntarily donate books to the library for those causes. I just really prefer that if I have a choice in the matter, which most of the time, you know, we're paid taxes no matter what, but if I have a choice, I would prefer that my tax dollars not support these other agendas. That's my only concern. And I think the biggest thing is, is parents are the leadership of the family. They need to know what's going on with their child. So if they're coming to the library and they have access to this information, and even if they're older, if the parents don't know, how can they work with their child? You know, you're asking the library to give them things that their parents don't even understand that they're desiring. So we need to, we need to develop that relationship between parents and children. Don't, I mean, we just can't, I was a teenager once, and that, I will admit, I got in trouble in fifth grade for discussing body parts. You know, at that time, you know, 60 years ago, it was not appropriate, but they're curious, and if they have the opportunity, they're going to, they're going to whisper, 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 and learn things that they don't necessarily need. Thank you for everybody's talking.
Sherry Kerr here. Anne, I should say. Thank you for everybody coming. One of the books, I don't remember the name right off, but it's for 12- to 17-year-olds. It discusses having sex with your teachers, children being roofied, doing drugs, orgies in the school. This is not appropriate, whether you're a Christian, whether you're LGBTQ+, or anything else. And I wouldn't think that any of us would approve of that. And, you know, that's putting in these children's minds that it's okay to be roofied, that it's okay to be raped by your teachers, and for all this stuff to come, you know, to go on in the school setting. And that's just one thing that I took home from this. So I don't think, and another thing is that children, yes, the children have to have the parents' permission to have a library card, but a lot of times when the children get older, they can just walk across the street from the school, come in here and read anything that they pick up without their parents even knowing what they're reading, and it's supposed to be parent-guided. And so I have a problem with that. That's all. Can I ask the name of the book you referenced? I don't have that list with me here. Victoria Howard?
Hi. I didn't come prepared to talk or anything, but first of all, I wanted to say that I have nothing against what adults choose to do, but I'm very aware of what can happen to children because I am involved in saving children. And I'm also a child that was raped between the three. So talk about confusion when a child comes in contact with explicit pictures or information about sex and the parents aren't there to oversee what happens to a child. A child does go through a lot of confusion. I went through depression, went through therapy, but I'm a survivor. But the thing is, it's not about, it's the parents that has to protect their child. It's the parent's right to teach your children about sex. It is all about protecting children. Are you aware that of the child trafficking? I mean, it relates to some of what I'm talking about. And our job is, we are the church, we are the adults. It's our job to protect children. It is not okay to show pictures, sexually explicit pictures to children or information in books. The books are appropriate for adults or for a parent to teach their child however they choose to teach their child. Census, children need to be taught about school, math, English, science, and about the world, not about sex. Up to the parents, not up to the library or schools.
Thank you, Vicky. Victoria, sorry, Victoria. I'm a Vicky, so it's a mistake. Sorry. Sandy Nelson?
Most of the people have been addressing the group, and I wish to address the board. First of all, a little bit about myself. I grew up here in Camden, actually, two bridges over. And I graduated from Camden High School, went to the University of Missouri in Columbia and got a Bachelor of Science, majoring in Biology, minoring in Physiology and General Science. I went on to get a Master's of Education at Columbia in the area of Guidance and Counseling. Now, in my life, I'm 81 years old, I've had a lot of adventures, and I could list a lot of things that I have done and been participating in. But one of the things that's great about my life adventures is that the reason I had them is because my folks believed in reading and had an Encyclopedia Britannica. This library did not exist when I was growing up. That encyclopedia also had a second branch, and they got that set also of science, 12 volumes. I still see the picture of where, in my mind, of where they were in my, in my room. But now we have the libraries, now we have the internet, now we have streaming videos, we have all kinds of stuff. They sort of provide answers. When I had a question to my parents, I said, "Why is such and such?" And they'd say, "Have you looked it up yet?" I said, "No." "Look it up. If you can't find it, come back." So I've looked up stuff all my life. I really have a yen for waiting. The problem with now is that not all of the answers that are being given to people are factual. Many of them are opinions, are their beliefs. And a lot of times, those beliefs, those opinions or those beliefs are based on religion. The difficulty there is that I find is that it sort of imposes a person's religious belief on other people, sort of sideways, not really overtly, and, and sort of sneaky. People believe that what they're saying is actually true, when it's actually only a belief, such is the case of Mr. Ousley. He's proven that he has a bias against LGBT+ people. He got in trouble with the city council. They enacted an ordinance because of his behavior. I think it's 155. But these kinds of beliefs in people exist everywhere. I have experienced that all my life. One of the things that they do is... One of the things that they do is they say that we decided to be gay. Well, I tell you, I didn't wake up one morning and say, "Hey, I wanna be a lesbian. That would be really great. I would be able to be discriminated against. I could lose my job. I could get evicted. Isn't that so fun? Well, I might even get beat up and murdered. Did I choose? No. What happened with me, because there are the books telling me about gender, the science hadn't gotten there yet, I discovered it. Gender identity is discovered. It's not taught. It's not a decision. My decision is, is to be open about who I am. People sort of discover it sideways because I don't go around introducing myself, "Hi, I'm Sandy Nelson on the lesbian." I just say, "Hi, I'm Sandy Nelson." And they discover later that this woman that I've lived with for 37 years is not a roommate. She's my life partner, my wife. So with that, what the theme of it is, is that I don't know your beliefs, the board, I don't know you as individuals, I don't know if you have a religious belief or a non-religious belief, or a religious belief that's accepting of gay people, because most of the major churches here in town readily welcome us as congregants. So what it is, and I wrote it down so I would remember it, it's on the second page. So what, what happens here is that you will be representing the library as a group. You will be representing the character of the library. Character is important here. Do you have, as a library group, the character that supports the Constitution of the United States? Is it a character that respects diversity? And is it a character that will stand up to the bullies? Because they, the bullies throw out words like, "It's pornographic." There's no sexual definitions here. And, or they throw out, "Oh, they're Marxist," or they're these buzzwords. So I hope your decision shows a good care. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm gonna try to squeeze through. Thank you. Hi, my name's Laura Scott, and I came today just to speak from the heart, and a lot of my other speakers have already made a lot of the points I was going to make. But I will share a little bit of personal experience. First of all, I taught, have taught for over 40 years in the Kansas City area, in Jeff City. I've taught special ed, I've taught regular ed, I've taught parent-infant programs, and I've taught college classes. So I've, I've done the whole realm. And I'm proud to say that I'm one of those teachers that was supportive of kids who did not feel like they were accepted by their peers or their peers' parents, because that is a horrible feeling not to be accepted by people just because you don't fit the norm that they think that you should. I'm all about acceptance for everybody. I also am speaking as a parent. I have four children, they're all adults. My oldest child is non-binary. That was an evolution. It took a while to get there. I think that they still face a lot of discrimination because of who they are, and that's very hard. So what I want to say to you is, what we're talking about today really is gender and gender identity. We aren't talking about sex. We're talking about gender. There's a big difference, okay? So I suggest to you to educate yourself exactly what it is. I encourage you to have your own children reach out to everybody, no matter, you know, who they are, accept them for who they are. And I suggest to the board that we let these books stay. I have total respect for parents. I have done a lot of outreach programs where I work with families, and it is your choice how you raise your child, okay? It's also my choice how I raise my child. My child did not choose to be non-binary. They evolved and finally discovered themselves, or maybe I should say they were always non-binary, but it took a while before they could put it out there. And did not actually tell us that until about three years ago when they're 37. So, I mean, we've gone through a lot of other things, but yeah, so it's sad. So think of the kids, the families, the children, and maybe they have no one to talk to, and coming to the library and reading a book is their solution. Also, your solution as a parent should be, to be open to your kids, to talk to them and say, "Well, I know you read this in the book, let me share with you what I believe." And that's fine. Do that with your own kids. But don't put your pressures on me and my kids and the kids I know who are suffering. Thank you. I'm not crying. I have allergies.
Nancy Bates.
Hey there. I really appreciate all the good positive advice you're getting about keeping these kind of books on the shelves. I was offended by the last meeting. A lot of the remarks that were made hurt my feelings and made me sad. Racist, homophobic, Hitler wannabes that are trying to take over, and I don't know who's leading them, but they've got a leader causing this ruckus. And lastly, I want to say that, you know, it's been 50 years ago, last month, that the American Psychiatric Association declared homosexuality is not a mental illness. And please, if we don't support our kids, they're gonna grow up to be just like the people that are causing the shrouds. Thank you.
Hi. Hey. My name's Nancy Pope. It's a pleasure to see you all. What a great turnout. This is awesome. And I just wanted to speak only briefly. I am a family therapist. I continue to practice. And I'm a member of Child Advocacy Council, and our role in this community is to prevent child abuse and neglect. And we are actively promoting the prevention of child abuse. I know there are concerns that having this kind of information in the hands of children will expose them to being exploited, or maybe to know too much. But we have learned that when children have more information available to them, they are better able to protect themselves, to know that they need to talk to teachers or to confidants, counselors at school, senior schoolteachers, that sort of thing. So we want them to have as much information as possible so they have the language to express what they're going through. We want them to have that language available. And what better place than a library, which is an institution we have made in this United States, as one of freedom and freedom of speech is so important. Over 7% of people in the United States self-identify as LGBTQ. That means you probably know somebody in your family, a child, at least a nephew, grandchild who is LGBTQ. And you want them to have the language to be able to talk about what they're going through. And where are they going to get that language but here? In a school with knowing librarians. And I can't think of anybody better trained to determine what books should be on the shelves than our school librarians. They're trained in it, they go to school for it, they have the wisdom to do that, they have research, they have the reviews of books before they even come here to our school or to our librarians. So my encouragement would be to turn these kinds of decisions over to librarians and not to one segment of parents who are going to impose a set of beliefs on another set of parents who don't want those beliefs imposed on their children. So here, let's hear it for librarians.
Steve?
Dacoplis.
Dacoplis.
Yeah, I'll just be brief, but Nancy pretty much nailed what I was gonna say. Librarians, I believe, are highly educated people. Don't they have to receive a master's degree? Is that correct? Is that correct? Everybody know?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think we're trying to fix a system that really isn't broke. If you're worried about these books, I'm sure we could put them in a section that maybe it's titled, "These Books Require Conversation." Could we have something like that? It wouldn't hurt anybody's feelings or step on anybody.
It's a bit controversial about protecting.
Conversation never hurt anybody. Anyway, that's it.
That's great.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Alex Gillett, and I'm really glad I'm following that gentleman because I got a feeling that he and I might disagree on a lot of things, but on this, I think we probably agree very much. I don't believe anybody in this room is really into banning books, but there are some books that are absolutely inappropriate for little children to be having access to. And I believe as a school, as a library board, categorization from 12 to 18, which I believe I saw, is probably not as accurate as it could be, so I'd appreciate if maybe you looked at the age ranges of who can and cannot have access to certain books. Some of the books in question absolutely do have pornographic information in them. And one of the things we are doing this day is, as somebody illustrated, we're not just looking at children to read things or people or parents to read to their children, we're giving them very graphic images of how they should think about things because they don't understand those words, right? So they need the pictures. And I would just be, just as adamant about heterosexual pornographic images in those books as I would be any kind of homosexual images that are in those books. So please make a note of that. If there are any books out there that also show heterosexual acts in pictures that children shouldn't have, that maybe those should also be restricted as well. And when I say the word restricted, I mean that quite similar to what this gentleman thought of maybe, and I don't know how the board will put it together, but maybe those books do need to be culminated and be put in a particular area to where the children that are across the street cannot just walk in here at any time they want to unabated and pick them up off of a shelf and see things that maybe they don't need to see quite yet. I'm gonna read a quick quote from Corey Ten Boom, if you would, please. "And so seated next to my father in the train compartment, I suddenly asked, 'Father, what is sex sin?'" He turned to look at me as he always did when answering a question, but to my surprise, he said nothing. At last, he stood up, lifting his traveling case off the shelf and set it on the floor. "Will you carry it off the train, Corey?" he said. I stood up and tugged at it. It was crammed with watches and spare parts he had purchased that morning. "It's too heavy," I said. "Yes," he said. "And it would be a pretty poor father who would ask his little girl to carry such a load." "It's knowledge. Some knowledge is too heavy for children. When you are older and stronger, you can bear it. For now, you must trust me to carry it for you." I believe that's very accurate in an awful lot of things that we're talking about today, my friends. What you want to have your children and where you wish to steer them is obviously your choice, but there are things that children don't need to know yet. And at eight years old, figuring out whether you're a boy or a girl really isn't on their mind. They're not quite sure what's going on, maybe sometimes. I know little kids wanted to be a pirate, maybe when they're four or five. Thank goodness, I've heard this, somebody else say, I'm not, I can't quote them, so I'll give them the attribute that it's not my quote. But thank God that when I wanted to be a pirate as a, as a five-year-old, they didn't cut off my leg and poke out an eye. So my dear friends, let's consider this and maybe look at figuring out how we can get these books into an area where the access does exist, but it is very highly regulated. Thank you very much.
I'm taking this off so you can hear. And I'm recovering from a slight concussion, so if my thoughts are all over the place, I apologize. I just wanted to touch on a few things. We've had some really good speakers today that have brought up some really good points. I'm against book banning. I think there should be access to books that all children should be represented across the board. I just wanted to bring up a couple of points. Having books that are about LGBTQ or race or whatever are not gonna make your children become LGBTQ any more than reading a book about Curious George are gonna turn your children into monkeys. I mean, seriously. Things, you know, you're talking about pornographic things. Are we talking about romance novels? I mean, well, they're pornographic. They go into, they go into quite a bit of detail. They have quite a bit of detail. I mean, I could go grab one or read you an excerpt if you'd like to hear it. Children do read those. I remember going to my library and reading them. Children do read them. Children can read them. They can go out and pick one up off the shelf. So if you're talking about banning pornography, I mean, seriously, parent, parents need to be parents. I mean, where are the parents? If you're talking about three, four, five, six-year-olds grabbing a book that they should not be reading, where in the heck are the parents? Why is a three-year-old running around loose in the library? You're talking about child trafficking. Your child's gonna get trafficked if they're running around loose anywhere in public. I'm sorry. I've been on the Human Trafficking Coalition for years and years and years. If you want your child to be safe, if you want your child to be protected, you talk about things like this. You talk about how to keep them safe.
That's right.
You don't put them in a bubble and not let them read any books about sex or about bad people or about what could happen. You talk about it. You educate them. Education is key. And there's a lot of parents, maybe in this room, I don't know, but if you're worried about what your children may bring to you that you don't know about, educate yourselves. Pick up the books and read them yourselves. It may be something you don't know anything about, maybe you don't think you believe in, that you're, "Oh, that's, that's weird, I'm sorry, I don't want anything to do with that." Pick up a book and read about it. You might surprise yourself. You might learn something. And you might be learning something about your neighbor, your niece, somebody you know. Nine times out of 10, it's gonna be about somebody you know. And how about showing some empathy and learning, and what would Jesus do?
Amen.
God, I've never been called the leader of the Ku Klux Klan. That was cute. I love you guys saying everything you want to say. This is great. I love a free country. A little hot of having, I mean, a hot flash in the middle of a mood swings. No. Listen, I listen to you. I understand your passion for the binary kid you got going on there. Bless his heart. Let's see. What to address first? I don't think this is a religious matter. I think it's a moral issue. And I don't think it's all about the gay part. I think it's about the attack on the kids. They're gonna lose their childhood if they get into this stuff too soon. Please, I'm asking you to let them be kids, man. What, really? Seriously? I have, I have a daughter that's gay. She's, I lost her. And she was really upset, and her friends were really upset about the way things have turned in their community and how they are going for younger and younger and younger children. They believe that it's a perversion. And, you know, the pictures, that's a problem. Little kids, they get things printed in their brain. What if they get obsessed with that? You know, when you said what you said about you don't believe in banning books and You know, when you said what you said about you don't believe in banning books, and all of you that said that, and it's about our freedom, it's not, and other people have said it's really not about banning the books, it's about protecting the kids. And then the commissioner said, "Let's put them up high, get them away." I think any of them that look like pornography need to go. I think that if there are educational or books that don't talk about having sex with your teachers and things like this, there's gotta be a library section for them to understand what's going on with them. And so I'm suggesting that the librarians don't let it have pornography in it. I'm sorry that their whole lifestyle revolves around sex, but there's, there's a whole lot more to their lifestyle. A lot more. For example, as you well know, our counselor in the room, they have a lot of mental health issues. A lot of mental health issues. And their suicidal rate is incredible. Is that because they didn't know about it when they were five that they were gay? No. No, it's because they get into these lifestyles that are associated with other issues like drugs and so forth. There is a society within LGBTQ of upstanding, morally upright people that just have this gay thing going on. They don't go to jail, they're not on drugs, they're doctors, they handle themselves. And I'm gonna tell you, their children, you better believe this, ask them, they don't want this pornography in front of their children. They raise their children in the best schools, they teach them Mandarin, they, so, so, we're getting in the moral muddy water here when we say we can't ban books. And, I mean, are there porno magazines in there with drawings for adults? Do we have that in here? I'm asking you. No, that we're gonna do it for the kids? Come on now. Everybody's got an argument, but there's gotta be some stuff straightened out here because this is about little children that need their childhood. God.
I appreciate all of your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Can I add a comment?
Just to come up so everybody can hear ya.
Okay.
I just had another thought, and a lot of it concerns you, Victoria, is that right? Victoria? And I feel so bad for you that you experienced what you did. I don't know if it happened when you were young or whatever, but you said you were a rape victim.
She's at three.
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 Three years old.
At three years old. So, yes, that's horrible, and that should never happen to anybody. But what I would like to say, and this is kind of my own experience too, is that this would not have helped you. But as you're older, reading books helps you experience something without really having to experience it. And so when you talk about child trafficking, maybe reading a book that has child trafficking in it will help you to know that this exists in the world and that I should be careful and that maybe I shouldn't trust everybody. So I'm just saying that reading it in a book might help you not to have to experience it in life. And I know that you were three, there was nothing about that. I also think, it kind of amazes me, we're talking about books when all the movies and video games and all that's out there, that has just gone crazy. And I know that as parents, hopefully you can kind of control that, but I think a lot more goes on than you don't know. But I myself feel like I've experienced a lot of things and learned a lot of things through books that then I did not have to experience in life where I was more prepared to experience in life.
Can I say something? Do we appreciate the comments and everything? The thing is, is that my reason for telling this is not because sympathy or anything like that, because I'm basically a survivor. My point is, is that sex or explicit literature or indoctrination or encouraging things like that to a child, a two, three, four, five, six-year-old child is inappropriate. It's up to the parent, as a parent, to protect their child from anything, whether it's movies or games or books. And just like the gentleman said earlier, that this stuff should be put on maybe an area where a child that comes across the street from the school doesn't just walk in and look at naked pictures of boys sucking a boy's dick or something like that. Maybe that encourages that type of behavior, and maybe it's inappropriate for that age. What a person does when they grow up, that's up to them to discover their sexual identity and things like that. Not a child just sees.
So you're talking about six and less, and I totally agree with that.
A child, a period.
But I think when you're a teenager, you're curious, and you wanna know, and it's very safe to do it through books.
Curiosity as a child leads to hiding and experiencing sex. With, with boys? Girls and boys or? Boys and boys or girls and girls? That's up to the parent to talk to that child and to teach that.
I'm not against that.
But that child is curious, and does it come from the library? Okay. Does it come?
I have a question for the board. If there's no pornography in that, in this building for adults, who is responsible for putting the child pornography in the building? And maybe we should examine that person's life and see if the children in their life are safe.
Oh, wait.
Well, I'm asking a question. It's pornography. Have you guys that are talking about these books, open the books?
Yes. They're not pornography.
Oh, you think it's okay?
We're educational. Let's make sure it's not pornography.
I don't want to stand out here.
You think it's okay? The law says it.
There are questions to come up and sign in, James. Did you sign?
I haven't signed in.
Can she sign in?
I wanna keep it so that it's.
I just would like to address the board. Sherry Angel. I have had my library card for over 40 years in Camden County, and I'm very active in our library. From the time my children were born, at 26, we've been very active. I 100% believe in bringing children to the library so that this continues generation after generation after generation. I would hate to see us lose our library because it's such an asset to our community. Unfortunately, I see the demographic. I think we need to do everything that we can do to bring younger people and children into the libraries so they feel welcome, so we can continue with libraries. And I would hope as the board that you also understand that. I just want to remind everyone, I won't tell you my personal views, but the purpose of a public library is to serve the general public's information needs rather than the needs of a particular school, institution, or research population. Please remember that. I would hate for us to be having this conversation next year if there are a group of people that wanted to ban the Bible or religious books from our library because of the things that are spoke about. It goes both ways, guys. We can't be on this side and expect there not to be any banning on the other side. That's not what a public library is about.
So you're okay with the graphic pictures?
I would annihilate anything in a public library.
I'm sorry.
Now, I brought my children to the library for over 25 years. I looked at books they checked out. There were books that I didn't want them to check out, they didn't check out. I'm a parent. I don't want us to lose our libraries. As a card member that is active, please listen to my opinion. Thank you.
And any books is like burning books. If you don't want.
Do you want to come and sign that? No. That will, too. Is there, do you want to just use Roma? Romalong? Is that right, Romalong?
Yes, Romalong. It's all good. I mean, our community consists of different opinions, different people, which we need in order to have a community, right? It's part of it. Every opinion is welcome. But, you know, reading, like, hearing all your views, I mean, as a teacher, as a mom, I could teach my student to be respectful, to stop bullying regardless of your race, sex, religious belief. If you are disrespecting another student, I will stop you because it is my job as an adult to stop that. That's a universal practice. Respect is a universal practice that we must tell everybody, encourage a generation to do that, right? So, I mean, like some of you said, we want, we want our job just to protect our children. There are books that are entitled for, you know, for the kids to enjoy. Let them be kids, but there are books that is so controversial, like even when you read it as an adult, that's too much graphic. I mean, I don't agree that we should ban all this book because, like you said, we compose with different opinions here, that we believe that if certain parents would agree that, hey, we want you to kinda like go with this book, I understand that one, but as a librarian, we need to have a clear section that this book is very controversial, that parents have a choice to send their kids there or not. But again, because again, if I'll just see, we just go and decide that we support like, you know, this part of religious group of the kids, but we also have people that pay taxes that also evolve that, you know, they have their different beliefs. And in being able to have the consensus to function as a society, which I agree, but I am not going to expose any book in there just to let my kids access it anytime just because we don't know what's going on. But if we could have a clear section for parents to understand this book is kinda very detailed, specific about it. So when you bring your kids to the library, you said, "Kids, stay away from that," like you said. That's understandable because as a parent, it is your job to protect a child. It is our job to tell our kids, if they, you like it or not, they will come to the point they'll be asking about sex, be curious, and it is your job as an adult first. They shouldn't be getting it from anybody. They shouldn't be getting it from their friends. But most of all, most of the time, they get it from friends, but how? They exposed to these materials. By the time you tell them, probably they already know something. Therefore, it's a job. Our job as a parent is to, when they get to the age, we should be the one educating them. We can only do that if we ourselves are, we really, we're really informative enough to understand that. We shouldn't be judging them like, hey, you shouldn't be doing that. You know, like I said, we all believe, you know, this is society. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, right? But then we could find a consensus to make a way, like if this book are like that, I mean, I'm a teacher, I want, I like informative, but this book are checked out at their home. So you like it or not, you're not reading it to them as an adult, they're reading it, they'll be reading this on their own. I mean, and in their little minds, this generation, you like it or not, when they'll be reading this book, it plays in their minds. But if they, it's not like it's their job as a counselor, as a teacher to inform. Tell them the general, hey, nobody should be allowed to touch you. If you're not capable, you tell them. It's the basic role of how to keep themselves safe. That should be served at home, that should be served in school, counselor and all, that's her job. But not to the point, according to one of the author of the books, Girls Resist by Kailin Rich, she was talking about, you know what, I'm going to, yeah, this book that I'm going to put, I'm going to send it to the library because the librarian are the bad ass, sorry for the words, bad asses, because they will just shovel it in under the rug without the parents knowing. That's exactly what you said. It's kinda like, as parents, we wanna know what kinds of book that my kids are reading, right? It's our job to be responsible about that. So it is like, we, as parents, we don't wanna be like not being informed. We wanna be informed what books we're putting in there. And like I said, if you have a clear section in the library that this book is controversial, put it in there, that we, parents, are in command, who does not approve that book, then don't, don't let them get that one. But we wanna, we don't wanna be like, we want, we don't want this book to camouflage with the rest of the children's books that are innocent and all. We want them to be kids and kids. We want adults to be adults. It's not about like what gender are you, what race? I mean, you're an adult. Whatever you do later on adult, that's your life. But as kids, let them enjoy the innocence, let them enjoy life. Can we, can we teach them the general subject, science, math? Was that part of my time? All right. But, you know what I'm saying? But I think we could all agree in a way, like, we don't have to fight. I don't like judgment, or, you know, I don't, I don't wanna be judgmental, I don't wanna, you shouldn't be judging people regardless of their beliefs. It's a matter of respect.
That's right.
But when it comes to kids, that's where the story begins. It's our job to protect them. Let them be a kid.
I wasn't gonna say anything. The board, I work for the board. Obviously, the community has a lot of strong feelings on this whole issue. Obviously. All right? Now, what I'm going to ask of all of you, how would you like to have my job right now? I haven't started yet. I don't even start until Tuesday. All right? I don't know all the people who's staff for the libraries. I don't know all the processes yet as to how books are bought, who chooses the books, what are the issues as to where they're stored, how long are they stored? There are so many things in the basic process of what you all are talking about that I need to have time to look at. All right? And that's what I'm asking. Give me enough time to get in here and figure out what's going on. That's all I ask. Can you do that for me? Both sides? Okay? And I promise you that I will address the issue. All right? And I may make decisions some of you like, some of you don't like. I don't have an opinion either way right now. What you said, I agree 100%. Respect. The other thing is libraries are for education. Okay? And we need to look at what that role is. Somebody else said, what is the, what is the culture of the library? What's our position as far as providing information to the people of Camden, Camden? And all I ask is for your support. Give me time, and we will continue to have these discussions as long as I serve as the director. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Okay. If there isn't any other questions or comments, if anybody else wants to talk as, to us, to all of us, then we're gonna go ahead and proceed with our meeting. You're all welcome to stay if you'd like, but we're just gonna talk about minutes and, you know, regular board stuff. So I wanted just to thank all of you for coming and sharing your thoughts. If the, please write to the board, to the director, if you have any questions or comments after thinking about this and going home. We're happy to listen. Quite an interesting meeting. It was great, I think. So we need to, I need to, has everyone reviewed the minutes of the last meeting? And is there a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Adam is in there.
Hi, Adam.
And all in favor?
I have to go and mute. I hear you.
Hi. Okay. So we'd like to move on then to the treasurer's report. And if everyone has reviewed that, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I have a motion to accept the treasurer's.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Side conversations are not allowed.
Okay.
Ask me a question. Well, do it with all of us then. That would be preferable. Thank you. Both of you know better. And in a case, is there a second to accept the treasurer's report?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, good, I heard Adam. And so further moving on to bills payable, has everybody reviewed the disbursements? Is there a motion to accept the disbursements?
A motion to accept the disbursements.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions about any of it? If not, then all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. New business is again is the introduction of Dr. Paisley, which I did earlier, basically. And then I also wanted to thank John Oliveri for participating and being a member of this board of trustees for a long time. He's been on, I think, for a good, almost, I don't know, Vicky, eight years, maybe?
Oh, longer than that.
But anyhow, I wanted to thank him for his tenure and help, and hopefully he'll still have a voice if he has anything to say from the community aspect. And then I also wanted to invite the community, if there's anyone who has an interest of being on the board of trustees, to please send their application to James Gohoghan, the commissioner, or Ike Skelton to do that. That's open to the public. So I encourage any of you who really want to be a part of the board to help with making decisions, to send your application to the commissioner. And then my comments, president's comments, I don't really have any other than I really, 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 really wanna thank the Cupwick for coming out today on such really, really, really wanna thank the Cupwick for coming out today on such a weathery kind of day. We will be present at the Republican Club on Tuesday, giving some information about the library to those people. I think anybody and everybody is welcome to come if they'd like to. The Christian church named Camden Town is where we have our meetings. If there's anybody that's interested in what the library's doing, we're going to show a PowerPoint and inform everybody of what the wonderful things are that the library does provide. And the branch reports, I thought everybody did a really good job. I've been asking for them to tell us in simple terms, not in all libraries speak, so that makes it easier for all of us to understand. And I just wanted to thank the branch managers for that. Hopefully soon we'll be having a meeting so that we'll be able to meet all the branch managers and have a discussion and kind of update, get to know them. We have been here for five months and really haven't had a meeting with the branch managers, so I think that's important to get onto the agenda. And I think that's all for me. Is there anything I missed, you guys? That's it you can think of? Any discussion on any other thing that we need to discuss at this point in time? I think because of the weather, we'll adjourn this meeting and then everybody can just get whatever they need to for the next, the next meeting and we'll be in touch. So if.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Two motions to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.